We want to make sure, jump right in.
Thank you. My name is Betsy Schultz. I'm the Families in Transition Coordinator for this school district. So I support, and I'm a social worker by training, and I'm also the social worker at Core, but tonight here is the coordinator. I support families that are experiencing housing instability, and I support social workers supporting families, families that are experiencing housing instability. So I just, November is homelessness awareness month, so in that spirit, I'm here, just to build some acknowledgement and awareness, the realities that many of our families are facing on a daily basis. I think, you know, homelessness is very real in our district and our community, and it's oftentimes invisible, so kind of bringing some visibility to something that feels invisible. There's a lot of shame in being labeled a homeless. And so, thinking about, you know, it's very complex and multifaceted, and so bringing, again, just building that awareness, one, to not only validate the experiences that our families and kids are having, but two, to really increase empathy across our community for our families. So I just want to start by developing some shared understanding around, you know, what the McKinney-Vento Act is. You might have heard McKinney-Vento, MKV, there are a lot of acronyms in their education, and I'll use them interchangeably. But just what the McKinney-Vento Act is, even, you know, within our community, different systems that serve families experiencing homelessness, like the shelters, they have different definitions of homelessness from what the McKinney-Vento Act is and in the realm of education, so just building some shared understanding. So the McKinney-Vento Act was created in 1987, it was updated in 2015, and it was created to provide legal protections for students and families experiencing homelessness. And the intent of it is to reduce barriers for student engagement, so that's from enrollment to student achievement, including extracurriculars, full participation, and so that more equitable access for those kids and families. And the law does provide us a definition, and so that, I'll just read from the side, that a child can be considered homeless when they lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. And so while the law gives us that definition, it doesn't define each of those words. But generally, when we're thinking about identifying and determining homelessness, we can ask the question, can the student go to the same place, so fixed, every night, regular, and go to sleep in a safe and sufficient space? That's the adequacy piece. And so, you know, the inadequacy, the not being fixed, and the irregularness of nighttime residence looks very different from many families. And some of, you know, the nighttime residents that might, you know, be surprising that they would qualify as homeless. But again, it's very multifaceted and complex for our families, and so there's a lot of gray area, but generally, we, most of our families, and we'll see that in the data a little bit later on, is that most families are doubled up, so they're sharing the housing of others, friends or family, because of economic hardship. Other categories, when living in a motel or hotel, even if they're self-paying, living in a trailer park or camping grounds, just due to lack of, there's no adequate alternative accommodations, living in a shelter, so that could be like the emergency family shelter the Salvation Army here, a domestic violence shelter, it could be a Red Cross shelter, or they might be living in a public or private space that's not designed for humans to sleep in, so like a car, a park, a bus station, places of business, abandoned buildings, or substandard housing. And that could even be like renting out the basement space, but they don't have access to like a bathroom or a kitchen. Also, children that are part of migratory families who meet the lack of fixed, regular, and adequate. And then unaccompanied youth, so that's youth, and that can be zero to eighteen, there's no really age limit, not living with their parent or guardian, and in the, the lack of fixed, regular, and adequate. So, once we identify a student, they are entitled to certain rights under the law, and so the left side is, you know, kind of what the law says, very generally, and then the right side is how we implement that. So for our new families, that means that they're entitled to immediate enrollment. We don't require documentation, obviously they don't have stable residence, or not asking for a lease, or else not asking for the lease of the person they're staying with. We're not asking for proof of occupancy, we're not requiring immunization records or birth certificate. We work on getting those things, but the most important thing is to enroll students right away. And then the second piece, which is probably the biggest piece for our current families, is something called school of origin. So that is the school that the student last attended when they became homeless, or when they were last permanently housed. And so, under the law, students have a right to, and it's often in their best interest, for consistency's sake, to attend their school of origin. And that means, even if they're in a shelter out of district, even if they are at a hotel on the far east side of Madison, even if they're in a neighboring county, they have the right to attend the school of origin for the duration of the school year. And so, and that also extends to, if they were to become permanently housed outside of the district, they still are able to attend for the rest of the school year. And so with that comes the right to transportation to the school of origin, oh sorry, let me back up. They also can choose to attend their school of residence. So let's say, we have, as an example, if a family is at, was at Sugar Creek, they were evicted, they are staying in Sun Prairie, and they're, they're like, I want to stay at my school of residence for consistency, my kid has community there, I know the teachers and staff there, I trust them. And then after four months, they're like, you know, I think this situation we're in is, is going to be more permanent, they have the right to attend their school of residence in Sun Prairie. So that, they have that power of choice as well. Families also have the right to transportation to their school of origin, they provide the school district, and that also includes where they're permanently housed, even if they're outside of the district. And then also, this, the piece about removal of barriers. And so some examples of that are students automatically qualify for free lunch, and that also means that they, any fees associated are waived. And we also want to make sure kids have the opportunity, like their house peers, to be able to participate in a club, so that means we're taking care of fees, if they need a late cab after school, or arranging that, being able to play sports, we make that happen. So, you know, the, the law, the way we implement it is really, it's a way to provide consistency, and we know that's a protective factor for kids experiencing trauma, and homelessness is an adverse childhood experience, it is traumatic, and so that consistency is super important in building resiliency. And then also for the, the family to know that they have choice in this really tough situation that they're in. So, what does that look like in our district? So far this year, we've identified eighty-two students as homeless. So there's the breakdown by level, with the most being at elementary. And just for some comparison, for some context, last year in total, for the entire school, we identified a hundred and twenty-three students, so we're already over halfway there. That increase is very consistent with nation and statewide and surrounding communities' numbers. It's, you know, we had a little dip during COVID in terms of being able to connect and identify families, but it's been steadily increasing since then. So, even, you know, we likely are still under identifying, because we know that there's a lot of stigma with, with being homeless. And even my title, I don't, we don't refer to it as like a homelessness, it's on a families in transition, trying to reduce some of that stigma. So we're likely under identifying families. You know, we can use our economically disadvantaged rate, which from our report card is around twenty-five percent, and so it would be around ten percent of that, which I think is like a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty. So I think we're on track to better identifying, and we still probably are not identifying all families. And just in terms of causes and why we're seeing an increase, I would say, for our families, something else is getting more expensive, and families just aren't able to keep up with, you know, when it's time to renew their lease, they're like, we can't, we can't make that work. And also substandard housing to a lot of families that do have permanent housing, or just finding that there are certain things that are impacting their health, like mold or insects, to, to make a decision to their, and help with their family. And also just, families are just one hardship away from, you know, being able to afford their rent, their car breaks down, they can't get to work, they lose their job, unacceptable illness or a medical bill. And so that just kind of starts the domino effect. Families are making hard decisions about food, housing, basic needs, and sometimes that means lots of, lots of housing. So we talked kind of before about nighttime residence. So for us, and this is true across the board, everywhere, people, most families are doubled up. Some families are tripled up or quadrupled up, so there are four families, three families, two families living in like a two or three bedroom apartment. So that sort of speaks to the inadequacy of, of the housing situation. And also, many families are staying with multiple friends or, stable, because shelters are full, families aren't getting into shelter, hotel or motel around four, and unsheltered around two. And these numbers change even since I made the slides last Thursday, because many families are also bouncing around between an aunt's house and sleeping in their car, and staying at a hotel for one night. And also, a kind of brightness, some families, about twelve students have found permanent housing since the beginning of the year, since they identified. So part of our obligation under the law is to provide transportation to the school of origin. We use four primary modes of transportation. If families are doubled up in district, then they can take the, the nearest bus, and even if they're doubled up a little bit outside of district boundaries, but close enough to a bus stop, we're able to get them on the bus. Many families self-transport, so reverse mileage through gas cards. Most of our students are taking, or aside from in district busing, are coming to and from school via Madison Taxi daily. And then about ten of our students are using Everdriven, which is like a vetted car service for students, so it's sort of like a boot for our students. And just to give kind of context how far kids are coming, the gas cards are averaging about, families are driving about fifteen miles per day. And for Everdriven, those, I usually use those for rides that are over thirty minutes one way. So, in just calculating gas cards, every two weeks I do it, we had a family that was traveling almost a thousand miles every two weeks in their car to get their kids to and from school. So I think that really speaks to the importance of the, you know, the consistency that the law can provide, and also how important being part of this district is to our, is to our families. So there's also, you know, nowhere in the law does it talk about that there's a timeline on homelessness, and many families have experienced chronic homelessness. And many families, you know, whether they're homeless for several years ongoing, or whether they are homeless, find housing, lose housing, and are kind of in a cycle. Just in the two years I've been in this position, we have had thirty-five students who are identified both last year and in this year. So there's, that definitely speaks to the, the chronic homelessness piece. And just as some other points of, you know, that families going through experiencing instability in housing, there, there are many intersections with other parts of their lives that can kind of compound and make, you know, their housing stability, it just, it's compounding. So they're involved in many systems and facing many challenges. And so many of our families are multilingual, we have seen, you know, pre-study increase in newcomer families who are coming from a different country. And so that, that number's around forty right now. And then, in terms of special identification, it's about twelve, and I say known, because again, we don't require any paperwork, and so sometimes kids are coming in and, you know, we don't know what their, their needs might be right away. But that's kind of known right now. So, that takes me to my last slide. We talked about kind of the what, which was the law, the so what, which is what it looks like in our district, and the now what. You know, I think our district really has like a village mentality, in that we take care of each other. And so, being able to just bring awareness that social workers are doing, and student services are doing, is, you know, super important, again, making the invisible a little bit more visible. And, you know, I think we'd all agree, every student deserves to lay their head down at night, you know, where they feel safe and minded, not eat. And so, some questions that we're constantly asking ourselves are, you know, what can we do as a community to really support families that are making some tough decisions? And how are we being smart about creating meaningful partnerships that target the needs of our, some of our most vulnerable families? And so I think community awareness is a huge first step, starting small and building bridges out to community partners to identify where some of those gaps are, and then continuing to refine some of our internal practices around like enrollment, summer school, training, attendance, so that we are not creating additional barriers for our students. So, just to end with, to kind of paraphrase Maya Angelou, do the best you can until you know better, then when you know better, do better. Thank you for bringing this up. I guess this might be the first time we've ever talked about this at a board meeting, so there may be people who are hearing this for the first time, but I want to be very clear, like, this has been around for almost forty years. So this is not, this is not a new, a new federal act. This is, in our political climate, I feel like it's important to, like, homelessness for children has been a concern for decades, and we're doing a great job of doing whatever we can to help kids. But this is not, this may be new to listeners, but it is solid work that school districts are federally required to be doing. And I, I just appreciate the work that our district is doing for such a great need.
Also, thank you. This is, obviously, my shift in my work and now focus on homeless populations, and particularly around youth homelessness. But just for, like, another statistic, for Dane County, there's seven hundred and forty, seven hundred and ninety people experiencing homelessness in Dane County. About forty percent of those experience homelessness in that population, forty percent are from black community. Think about other disparities, like the Latino community, LGBTQ folks, and that we have a higher number of, percentage of youth who are LGBTQ experiencing homelessness, because it's not safe to go home, or they've been stigmatized, or it's just unsafe. So there's all these other things that we need to think about as well, when we think about homelessness as a systemic issue, but the disproportionality definitely exists, especially in Dane County. The one question I was going to ask was, making sure that we're thinking about culturally relevant organizations that can help out with that disproportionality, working with those as well, to increase that awareness. But I'll be speaking tomorrow about youth homelessness and homelessness, so, thank you for that.
I will not be there. I was there last year, but I won't be there this year. We should probably talk more.
Yes, for sure. But thank you for highlighting this, and I think, coming, I talk about Seattle a lot, but coming from Seattle as well, seven hundred and ninety folks for me is a, that is a solvable problem if we collectively put the effort politically and economically to make those investments into solving that problem. Coming from King County and Seattle, it's fifty-six thousand people in the industry that are housing insecure. And then also, HUD and the Trump administration will be looking at taking away permanent housing funding to other areas, and, and that will likely increase the number of folks that see, that we see our community that are experiencing homelessness.
Yep, yep, exactly, exactly, yeah.
Thank you, Betsy. This is really, as Meredith said, really important information for us to be aware. I know staff on the ground level with your support are helping students every day to ensure that that connectivity and that support is happening in our buildings. We're so grateful for your work and for all of the teachers and staff that are supporting students every day. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
So, I'll close with a gratitude for your flexibility today, and also the great work that you do with our families in transition. You know, I just felt for this presentation, they need, they need to see the face of, of the district that's really out there every single day. We're all supportive, it's not a single person's job, and hopefully you don't ever feel that way. But we, you know, you do so much on behalf of our families, and people know you, you know, by name, you put your information out there. So I just wanted to also take the time to thank you for the continuous work that you do for our population, the families that need you the most. Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. So revisit our agenda, are you okay if we go backwards a few slides? Good catch, just in time to make you uncomfortable perhaps. So we're going to go back a few slides, we do have a few staff recognitions, including, yeah, someone needs to do the clicker. Joe, you could go backwards to, I don't know what slide it is, it's confused. We do have, on slide seven.
Am I currently going backwards or forward?
Forward.
Ah, the small button.
What a way forward to be, I know. We could all do a drum roll. There we go. So in case folks listening have not heard, we are among the presence of our Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, I got that right, yeah, WASD's Superintendent of the Year for 2026. Congratulations. I know, for those of you that don't know, Dr. Clarity does not like to center attention. And in true Dr. Clarity fashion, if I may share just an anecdotal story, I and our leadership team of the board got to be on the call when you found out that you had earned the award. And I think it was within five seconds of saying, I'm getting this award, that it was immediately, and all of my team, and all of my, and yes, you have an amazing team, and this is your award for your leadership of this district, and the leadership of the team that is with us this evening and beyond. So just want to elevate that you are so gracious in acknowledging the folks behind you, as we all do as well, but to let you take credit for this. Especially if I can just share that the criteria include successfully meeting the needs of students, personal and organizational communication, professionalism, participation in local community activities, and an understanding of regional, national, and international issues. Those are things that you have shown and demonstrated to be a recipient of this award. And sharing congratulations and gratitude for your service. Any other board members want to just pour any other accolades while we have this uncomfortable Dr. Clarity moment here, yeah?
I do. I've been a resident of the Rowena since 2004, and watching what this district has turned into because of your leadership and your amazing team has, has been nothing short of amazing. And I hear it from the parents, I hear it from the kids, it's, it's just incredible, and just, congratulations. You know, it, it is just, it's such an honor to work alongside you and, and continue this, this journey of equity in education.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I'm just happy that everyone across the state now is, gets to know what we at this table have known for years. Well deserved.
Thank you.
I remember the first time we went to a school visit, you hadn't even been in the district that long, but you knew kids' names, kids knew your name. I mean, you were, you have made such a, a priority of getting to know, like, it has been students first from day one, which is how it should always be. We live that, it's a leadership style, and we're just grateful that we get to be part of this journey.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to interrupt you before you say something.
All right.
So, I, I've talked about, you know, coming here to the Midwest from Seattle many times, and, and many of the anxieties that we carried with us, that we would land in a, a place that would support us as a family, queer family, multiracial, we have disabilities in our family as well. We weren't sure where we were going to land, and we had a lot of ideas of where we're, where we're coming to, but what you have led, and what the administration and what this district has, has given us as a family, we can't go back to Seattle because we're not home here, because of this administration, and this will end because of your leadership. So I want to thank you, because I see my, my baby's here every day to this school district, and it's because of that what you all bring. So thank you, and that's reflected in this recognition. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
No more.
Don't we love staff recognitions? These are the best.
So I, I'll just briefly, first, yes, it's, it's uncomfortable in a different way, you know, just because I, our goal and mission is to serve, and then when it comes back to you, sometimes we're the worst at taking it, taking accolades back, and I just acknowledge that. And, yes, I, I talk about, I probably said the team in five seconds, but I can't tell you how, how much I care so deeply from the human side and professional side of these people that you see, and in front of us and across our district, and, and every single day. Just being able to walk in the spaces, it doesn't matter how you wake up and how they, how, what's just going on in your day. If you walk into a Broner's School District building and walk into a classroom, your day will get better. And that's, that's just a fact. Your day will get better if you walk into this, into the spaces, because you see the genuine care and, and love and interaction between adults and adults and adults and students that is genuine, authentic, and is from, from the heart, while putting high expectations for academic excellence in front of our students. And that's just very hard to do, it's complex work. And the Broner's School District has dynamic educators that do it at the highest level every single day. And so, I am just proud to be able to serve and to help create the conditions for that magic to happen. And that's what I, what I, what I really strive, strive to do, is to do, do that piece of the work. I also want to thank a, a group that I am forever grateful for, that, most are not here today, and one, one is still with us, and that's the original Board of Education that, that hired, that hired me here. And that was led by Meredith Dear Christensen, who is right here. Thank you so much, Meredith. Noah Roberts, Amy Allman, Carolyn Yonkey, Yanni Williams, Christina Navarro Hefner, and Tom Durst. That was the original seven in this room, in masks, doing, doing this. And then I can just remember everyone exactly was, was seated, and, and my only thing when I go up to here is just, don't mess this up, because this is the spot, you know? And that's, and that's five years ago now, it's crazy.
Almost five years to the day, it was the first interview.
Absolutely.
Like, the sixteenth, that's crazy.
Yeah, it's five years, it went by so fast. So, thank you. And then also, I definitely want to thank this board for continuing to hold me accountable to high expectations, continue to, as we'll do today, look at our data to ensure that our students are performing, performing at a high, a high level, but also just being so supportive of the work of the, of me and this, and this team, giving great feedback, and, and creating the space for me to give my best every single day. So thank you to this board, as well as well for all the, all the way of confidence. So, I'm going to stop, we got a lot to cover today. But what this means for the Broner's School District to, in totality, that's what matters to me. And also, just for anyone, I, I wonder if I'm not doing a good job expressing to people how much I love the Broner's School District, because no one should ask me if this means I'm doing something else in my future, like, I'll just put it on, oh, for recording. No. Until the board, until someone tells me that this is not the space for me anymore, or our values get misaligned, this is, this is the space that, for, for, for me, for my family, and there is no grass greener on the other side than the Broner's School District.
This is the greenest of grass.
So, thank you.
We need to watch your local news and news outlets for more exciting interviews. We'd want more celebration, perhaps.
Absolutely. So now I get to do the honor. We have, and part of the reason I was able to be awarded this, is because of the dynamic communication team that we have in the Broner's School District with Marcy, Marcy and Kern. And just this Friday, the team was, once again, recognized for their tremendous work in, in three different categories at the WSPRA Fall Conference. This year, they were, they walked away with three awards, they're going to have to build a trophy case now, for, just for the communications team in the category. And they won the upper level, from Award of Merit to Award of Excellence now. So in the category of Annual Report, the 2425 BSD Annual Report, in the, in Newsletter category, the Back to Schools Newsletter, and a, and a Special Purpose Project Campaign, Every Wild Cat Counts, Be Here, Be Great, Tense Campaign, Broner's School District walked away with the, with the plaques. Congratulations to. Broner School District walked away with the, with the plaques. Congratulations to.
This board extending gratitude to you both as well. Your communication support really supports all of us. Thank you for all you do to support our work, the work of the district. Yeah, we're just so grateful to have you here. Thank you. Now we get to talk money and budgets.
Dan loves these.
We're going to keep the positive energy and the joy and the celebration.
Just thinking, boy, we haven't had the good.
I know. It's been like two meetings. I don't know. Welcome Chad, welcome Pete. Great to have you back.
It does seem like it's been a long time.
Yeah.
But I'm here talking about the budget. You've grown a whole beard, so that's right.
Right.
So it's never too early to start thinking out looking ahead to next year, especially if, if some of the things we're going to share tonight hold true as we work our way through the 2627 budget. So a brief presentation, but I think certainly some news that we've been previewing with the school board quite honestly, since our last past operating referendum. We knew this day was likely coming. We're going to talk through why we're here and potentially start to talk through some of the solutions or some of the next steps related to where we think the budget's headed for 2627. So we want to walk the board really quickly through where we're at with the calendar. Again, review where we're at with current assumptions. And again, that is our best guess on where these numbers will land in October. Basically, a year from now, in terms of where we believe we'll be at. Now we're in the second part of the new state budget. So a lot of these assumptions will stick. So we have a very good idea what our budget will look like a year from now. We've got a little enrollment update and then the five-year forecast that the board is very familiar with, and then a little bit of discussion. Lastly, then we'll hear from Pete on the line of credit vote that happens this kind of year, every year. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time laboring the, the updated budget calendar. We do have lots of pieces on the way here. Really, the biggest next step for us is we're going to start to dip into allocation season. Our team is planning on, and I think it is our job on an annual basis, to make sure our staffing aligns to the mission related to the results policy. You'll hear from Amy and the team later on tonight. But also if there's places we can get more efficient, it's our duty to do so. And our, in particular, elementary schools are smaller than they were a few years ago. And we likely see us continuing to shrink staffing sizes in elementary schools just because it's the right thing to do. Instead of, we don't need class sizes of 10 or 11 just to hold on to the allocation we've had in the past. Quite honestly, worsened the budget scenario I'm going to walk you through this evening. And again, lots of steps on the way to a year from now, us passing another budget. A few of the assumptions that, and this is literally a screenshot off of Pete's master spreadsheet that has 97 tabs for us to calculate the five-year forecast, all of you are going to see at the end of this presentation. A few things we wanted to highlight here this evening. One, we are projecting we're going to be down 100 FTE. And that's the conversion related to 4K, summer school hours, and our headcount. And then in the end, open enrollment and all those factors into that as well. And primarily, you're going to see, we're going to walk you through this, graduate potentially the record class of the school district this upcoming June in 2026. And then we're predicting another small kindergarten class. So if that rinse and repeat for a few years here, we're going to see a dip in enrollment before it goes back up. But again, you drive around this community and there are new rooftops popping up all over the place. We do event the birth data that we are leaning on in terms of what happened in 2021, a record year of new babies in the city of Verona. So we are holding out hope, and hope is not a strategy, that more kindergartners will get here than we are predicting. But for the time being, Pete and I did build in a dip of 100 FTE for next year. The $325 student, we know it sticks because that's related to the second half of that two-year state budget. Special ed categorical aid, we've got it 42%. There's a blurb that just popped today that at least as of right now, the first round of reimbursement related to special aid is actually going to be around 35%, even though the state promised a lot more. But again, that is a bucket of money set aside. And Pete and I built that, and Pete said, this year's budget, he predicted about 38% in terms of special ed reimbursement. Pete still thinks we'll get there, but at least the early signs are the state will not hit the mark they promised in the last year, that last two-year state budget. They haven't done so in, in recent history. A few other things on there. Quite frankly, probably conservative, 5% increase on property value, but that doesn't really impact where we're going to be headed with a budget deficit. And then cost of living is trending to about 3%. Other fixed costs that are very hard for us to move, we likely will see a 7% increase in healthcare. That is below the nation average, but that continues to kind of be a snowball that rolls out of control that we have a hard time wrangling in. And then really all other expenses, we expect to go up to 3%. A lot of those are hard to keep in check as well. You see costs like transportation and utilities likely exceeding that in the coming years. Why don't I spend a little bit of time on this slide in terms of how we get to a budget deficit that Pete and I are going to present tonight? In essence, to try to keep it very simple, let's, let's talk big round numbers. Let's, we have $109 million in our operating budget. Let's pretend that's $100 million dollars. The cost of living is at a minimum right now, 3%. The way we build our budget on an annual basis, if we believe staff are entitled to cost of living rates and credit for a year of service, our ongoing expenses any given year, if everything else is flat, is about 4.5 to 5%. And we really need $5 million every year to balance our budget. This last year, that $325 a student equated to $1.3 billion. That exists in perpetuity unless something changes with the way the state does their budget to align our annual costs to what they're giving us permission to. We are rinse and repeat. If we went to operating referendum again and nothing changed with the state funding formula, it is not if, it's when we would have to return to do another operating referendum because they are that far below the rate of inflation and the rate of ongoing costs that our district has to absorb on an annual basis. That is the fact of the matter. That is how we went from $19 million of operating permission to Chad and Pete being up here in '25, '26, forecasting '26, '27, that we're going to be short on money in terms of operating permission. Questions on that at all? I think the math's relatively simple. We need about 5%, we're getting about 1.7% with that $325 a student. There's a quick snapshot of where and why we think we're going to be at where we're, where we're headed with enrollment. But again, that '26, '27 column, we're predicting for the time being, a very small kindergarten class related to this year's very small 4K class. That can change when we start to get our way through enrollment season. But when you graduate, you know, 485 students this year and bring in a really small kindergarten class, you end up with a smaller headcount. And that's where we likely see ourselves heading in '26, '27. That does relate to our operating permission in terms of what we get per pupil from the state of Wisconsin. Wanted to bring this back. We still, we still do have hope that there weren't a ton of families that liked to get into 4K and that they're out there and they will register kindergarten in both 2020 and 2021. We had what I would consider bigger than average birth class classes, and in particular, the city of Verona. So we're, we're hoping they're still with us. We're still residents and will be with us when they register for school this upcoming year. Here is the five-year forecast that the board's super familiar with. We highlighted a couple of columns or a couple of rows here. The top one there, again, this board has strategized managing the mill rate to the point that we weren't just set it and forget it at 13, where it was five years ago. Meaning then your taxes would, your property taxes would go up in step with the value of your home. And we've seen what's happened with the value of home prices, in particular, in Dane County. And the board has elected to check down the mill rate to historic lows over the last five years. But also has set money aside with Fund 39 to the point that this upcoming year, we're predicting $19 million of Fund 3911, and our minimum debt payment is $10 million. As a reminder to everyone watching and to the school board, that extra $9 million, the last time we went to operating referendum was about $11 million. And we predicted to flip to about $14 million the following year and build in a strategy where we could go to our taxpayers and say, we know we can set the mill rate, in this case, to 1066 the following year, and do an operating referendum where instead of prepaying debt for the next few years, we're asking permission to use it to operate the school district. And that is a scenario that we've, and we've done this strategically the last three or four years because we knew this day was coming. So in the meantime, while we prepaid all that debt, we've saved $11 or $12 million on interest for taxpayers. But we've also opened up a gap here where we've got, I think, a very strong narrative in terms of if the board elected to send us in the direction of a referendum, we've kind of set the table to do that. Again, if we decided that was the right move, and it's the board's decision to do so. At the bottom there, the four columns we highlighted is where we see ourselves heading in the next four years if all of those assumptions hold true. This upcoming year, we're predicting about a $3 million operating deficit. That was the case last year, but we had one big rabbit to pull out of the hat, and that was healthcare. We sent it to RFP. We worked with the providers to get a number that we were happy with. We put our staff through the headaches of changing a healthcare provider, and we were able to present a balanced budget to the board in the end. That wild card is no longer with us anymore. We've done that. Now we've signed a contract with Dean SSM Health and really have very few, I guess, palatable options to balance this budget for '26, '27. I did share a few of the big bucket items mainly related to what we would do with people that would be tools we could use in the event that we decided we wanted to balance this budget without going to operating referendum. I will tell you, when we go through these numbers, and that is this six-line chart, these are all one-year solutions. I just shared with you, four years down the road, if these assumptions stick, we're in a spot where $15 million in the hole again. So these would be potential solutions. If the board said, operating referendum is not on the table, you guys balance this budget with the tools you have. The tools we would take a look at were where we have big buckets of money that we have control over. So number one, and I actually do see us heading in this direction. We believe the right move with us having fewer pupils, fewer students will likely be, shrink our staff size a little bit. That will come out of the staffing and allocation process. We are not a layoff school district at this point and do not see us, do not see us heading in the direction of doing so. So we, if and when we reduce staff size through the allocation process, it would be through retirements and resignations. And could mean if we had a third grade resignation at a school, but we knew we had a small class sizes in second grade, we would have the ability to slide a second grade teacher to third grade to make sure we balanced things out. But likely see ourselves heading in the direction of, of reducing our staff size. That one's not very painful, and it's actually the right thing to do. The other ones on this list, quite frankly, would be painful. So one way to do this would just be free salaries. And it has been a priority of the school board and this administration to compensate our staff fairly and in line with what's happening around the county. And quite frankly, has worked. We've had better staff retention than we've had historically this last year. And I think Superintendent of the Year, but people also feel like they're compensated for the work they're doing in the school district. So that's one. That saves us $1.3 billion if it froze everybody at a staff. Another one would be no CPI increase, and that's a sliding scale from 0 to 3%. If we went all in and froze everybody, we'd close the budget gap. But it's a one-year solution. It is a one-year solution. We can't do it every year. Other things that are on the table, we made the decision, the board made the decision when we passed the $19 million operating referendum to give John Brummer and his team $1 million a year to maintain our facilities. And I think that shows. Part of the pride this community has is not only the staff and the students. People are proud of going into our clean and well-maintained schools. And that is, in my mind, is money well worth its weight every year. Putting a roof on a school before it leaks into all of the technology and our investment. And we've set those roofing for the last three years because John has said the tools, the board would have the option, levy zero in Fund 41. Dial back anything we're doing. It's like break and fix it mode. And then do a capital referendum five years from now and everything breaks. I wouldn't recommend that to all of you, but that is a tool we would have. Dial back what we've got with Fund 41. There could be savings in healthcare. That could be high deductibles, changes to prescription plans, beating up Dean SSM Health on renewal time. But that again is going to have an impact on our employees related to the healthcare package that we just sent through. And lastly, this is a budget saving measure, but we wanted to put that, this out there. With our declining enrollment, we do believe that we can be a little more aggressive on open enrollment seats this coming spring and, and winter. And again, what is required by law, what we do on an annual basis, would be projected to the school board. Once you guys sign off on it, the seats we believe have available around the district. If students should come into us, we give them extra $11 million in opera, $11 million. $11,000 with, with each student that opens a little district. But I'm more than anything previewing that conversation that we'll have in the coming months. But again, that's related to open seats, and it's not really a budget strategy, but it is something that the board should be aware of.
As you pause.
Thousands.
Then we might need some of those FTE of staff back. As you take a breath and pause between slides, it has been brought to my attention there'll be an announcement at 7:30 in the building just to end family conferences, just so no one is kind of alarmed.
Yes, thank you. I shouldn't say thank you on this slide, but yeah, thank you. What I do want to put into this, and I think it is rightfully so, when we have a ability to come forward like these.
Do it, but it's a really bad idea.
Correct. And so I just wanted to just publicly state, put that into the space that, you know, that the fix or a short-term fix of this side was we just mark the calendar for this conversation happening the prior year, the next year, and after the back end of the year after. As long as we continue to stay, as Chad has put into the state funding model of the 325 relative to what we actually get, it just seems like a perpetuity of having these type of discussions. And I don't want to, while it is serious, and we do have to have some serious conversations on how to address this, I don't want to put our staff in the space where if they're listening, thinking that they'll see these are suggestions of how we feel administratively to the board that we do this, in essence, on the backs of staff members. So that's just not where our heads are at.
Yeah, I want, I want to kind of reemphasize something Chad said earlier, which is the, I want to make sure everyone understands the cause of this problem is the fact that we live in a high inflation environment. Costs have gone up by 3% or more this year, and our revenue authority has not gone up by a corresponding amount.
And that's been true since like the 90s.
Yeah.
I mean, right? You've shown the graph before of that gap. So this isn't the past. This is decades of that constant behind.
And until the state government re-indexes revenue authority to inflation, this is going to be a recurring problem over and over and over again. And so like, I just don't want anyone to take away from this a narrative that we're in, we're facing a potential budget gap because somehow we've mismanaged our budget. That's not it at all. And you can see that in every other district in the state is in the same problem. Every district either has or will be going to operating referendum at some point very soon. And I think we're just in that position now. I think we need to talk about and consider looking at an operating referendum to be able to address this. Because of how we've managed our long-term debt, we're probably going to be in a position similar to what we were last time, which is we can talk about an operating referendum that has a minimal or zero impact on the mill rate. It's just getting that revenue authority.
And to the point of what we've kind of been talking about and the commitment this board has had that by trying to compensate staff, I'll say fairly very loosely, Joe, to use your words, I think you reiterated that staff have not been getting raises. They've been compensated as much in accordance to CPAT as possible. So we've also committed fairly confidently as a board and leadership that that is important to us. So just to review that slide, that these are conversation pieces, places to see dollar amounts, but we've stayed really committed on trying to compensate staff as best we can, given all the parameters and scenarios that we're faced. Thanks to the state. With sarcasm.
Good evening, Wildcat families. This is Principal Cox. Thank you for coming out tonight to support our scholars in our family caregiver conferences. At this time, if you could conclude your conversations with our teachers, they have a short turnaround time to be ready and prepared tomorrow for your scholars to return. Thank you again for all of your support and for being with us this evening.
Appreciate that verbiage.
Yep.
Principal Cox, that was lovely. Okay.
While I keep the discussion of the referendum, that doesn't always mean, as we proved last time, that it's an additional expense on taxpayers. And I want to reiterate my appreciation for the way that you have balanced all of the priorities the board has set out, ensuring that our staff is compensated well. The healthcare moves, tough moves. In retrospect, that was excellent timing when we're seeing premiums come out across the board right now. So that was really fantastic timing. I appreciate seeing all of the different ways, the different line items, you know, what other steps we could take. I agree, I don't want to take one of those. But I appreciate the balancing all of the different priorities, and even just the capital budget. There's a lot of really great work that's been going on. And I think our fiscal management has been, we've made it challenging with competing priorities and do have met the challenge continuously. And I have every confidence that we'll be in a good position, in a great position because everyone else in this state is going to be getting this too. Thank you.
Other thoughts or questions before we turn it over to Pete for a quick two slides on our open line of credit? All right. I'm hearing at least some interest in the possibility of further discussion related to an operating referendum. So I talked to Dr. Clarity. He will see us back here again for OE6 in December 15th. So I guess I'll wait to hear from Jen and Dr. Clarity, but I think a few slides on potential scenarios related to what a fall 2026 operating referendum, to me, seems like at least the board would be interested in seeing what this might look like. If we headed in that direction, we would be in a similar scenario to the last time we did this, where we would likely pass two budgets in the fall, waiting on what would happen in a following election, following the board passing two budgets, if we headed in that direction. Okay. Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete, a quick summary of why we needed an open line of credit?
Okay, thank you, Chad. And good evening, school board. It's nice to actually say something along.
Trying to be referenced by your spreadsheets.
So Chad and I were up here a couple of months ago. We were talking about a long-term note, or sorry, a short-term note, where we were able to tell you some of the reasons why we have to do short-term borrowing every year. And I'm just going to repeat some of them right now. Our main reason is the fact that our expenses, they come in flat. Like, it's mostly payroll that we have, and we're paid on a normal schedule. Whereas revenues, yeah, we're paid on a normal schedule round two, but it's always coming in later. In fact, I have a bullet point up there that we say we receive our last tax payment a month and a half after the year ends. And that's to $20 million, is how large that is. So we're always having to borrow money to make our ends meet. And we're not the only school district that does that, too. There's several school districts throughout the state that also do this. So we were here, like I said, we were here a couple of months ago to talk about a $7.5 million short-term note, which we had received. And we are also here tonight, though, to talk about establishing a line of credit with Lakewood Bank here in town. What we're going to have that, what we're going to do with that is we're going to have the ability to draw on that if we ever need it. I was just telling Chad today, I was looking at projections of when we're going to get to running out of cash, and we're going to get very low in the middle of January there. So we're going to end up having to have some sort of insurance here just in case we're not able to meet payroll. Like I had said, that happens with a number of school districts throughout the state. So the nice thing about a line of credit is we can draw on it when it's needed, and we're only paying interest on it when we're drawing upon it. Now, the last two years, we have had a lack of credit through the bank, and have never drawn on it. So we haven't had to pay any interest on that at all. And hopefully, we'll get the same thing this year. Like I said, I know that our projections would make it look like it's going to be pretty close to need it. So that's about the extent of it that I have. Pete wants to make sure we make payroll.
Right. And then when does the next sort of, so you said like into January. So when does that next sort of influx of money come in to them?
Well, our low point is right before our first tax payment that we receive in January. By state law, we're supposed to receive that on January 20th. And I believe January 18th is a payroll day for us. And that puts us down to a very low amount. However, sometimes a municipality may be early, but I don't know if I can necessarily count on that. So we are going to be, like I said, going to be pretty close.
And that any borrowing gets paid back?
Correct.
Immediately upon? So we're not talking about months and months of interest. We're talking about this, yeah.
Yeah. In this case, it could be a matter of days of interest on there. And it doesn't look like, based off of any projections that we're going to do now, if we'd have to borrow again during the summer, because this line of credit would actually be good until probably next October timeframe. But it doesn't look like we would have to be borrowing on it over the summer based off of our cash flow projections that we are seeing right now.
I know we've had this conversation before. It's just nice to have those, I think, dates and numbers for, again, folks to understand what we're talking about, about, you know, just how you described. Getting close.
Can you quantify at all, maybe like based on last year, what like the total amount of interest we pay on the short-term borrowing?
Okay, yes, I can. For like the note that we just received, the interest rate was, I believe it was close to 4% on there. But since we receive all of that money at the same time, we're investing it. So we're also investing it at about 4%. It might be a little bit less than that. So it basically offsets for the most part. It just depends on what happens with the interest rates. If the interest rates continue to go down, that's actually going to hurt us because our borrowing rate is set for here. But if the interest rate comes back up, then we can actually make a little bit of money off of that. So yeah, this rate here is significantly higher because it is, whatever the prime rate is, minus 0.75%. But we're only, like I said, we're only borrowing for a few days, a few weeks, depending on how long we need it. And we won't need all seven million. And we do not need all $7 million.
Did we take out a line of credit last year?
We did.
We got it every time.
Yeah.
How much of it did we use last year?
We didn't use any.
We didn't use any last year. And that's
Yeah, which is, yeah.
Wasn't it a higher interest rate last year?
It was a half a point higher, a half a percent higher.
We'll be taking a vote shortly. Any further questions for Chad or Pete?
I have several documents for all of the board members to sign tonight. John only has to sign one time, and Joe gets to sign three or four times. Sorry, Corby. And Jen.
That is if we approve this, right? That's if we approve it?
That's if you
So you're laying that out as a, hey, if you say yes. I know, now I'm reconsidering.
Yes, and if we bounce payroll, we don't know where to sign it.
Right, I just didn't want to sign my name, I'm sorry. All right, well, we'll turn it over. Thank you so much for that. Let's take a brief, then, following our agenda for any public comment that I am not aware of. Lori, checking with you. Okay. So then we will move on to board action, first of which now being this resolution authorization. I would accept a motion to approve the resolution we just heard of authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $7 million. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christopher. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the promissory note in an amount not to exceed $7 million, please signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. The vote has been approved. Onward, Pete, and those of us signing things shortly. Continuing in board action, as alluded to a bit ago, we get to do some results policy discussions. Reminders to the board and community, this is a bit of a reframe, then, given the rework that we've done on our results policies and the presentation we had a few weeks ago about different frames then on how we want to analyze the data that's coming from an administration. You do have, or members, the printed copy and the checklist that I hope you used in reading through and preparing for this evening. We're excited to go through this monitoring report with our new frames and all the data you have for us. Welcome, Amy and Teresa.
Well, I hope I referred that. You just did, so
Oh, okay, great. Well, look at that.
It was just a reframing from the old monitoring reports and the new monitoring reports. So thank you for
Sure. We didn't plan that.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Excellent. Awesome. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We have a lot fewer or a lot less dollar signs and many more percent signs that you'll see in our results monitoring report tonight. So as you mentioned, Jen, this is our first results policy with the new language. So instead of indicators or color codes where it says increase and decrease throughout the report, we instead are providing you with the body of evidence, whether than a recommendation of whether we've met reasonable progress or not. We provide you a body of evidence from '24, '25 with different data points aligned to that checklist, everything from our own internal data for all students, focus groups, students, cohort data, as well as some comparative data, and then some street data or stat and student voice data as well. So that'll be the body of evidence to refer to tonight. We did use one of our AI tools to give you a one-page summary on the front. We're using Brisk AI to try to synthesize it all as well. And we'll try to keep our presentation pretty concise as a result of that. So as we jump in tonight, we shifted from indicators to the questions. So the question we were speaking to answer throughout our monitoring report is to what extent are students demonstrating literacy at grade level? If I'm going to think of literacy, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And so the expectation that all students are engaging in that and the ability to think critically as a result. So our key findings as we organized the report, there's a lot of different assessments. And as we've found over the years, sometimes the assessments are changing, sometimes the norms are changing, and it's difficult to keep track of those. So instead, we went to looking at different grade bands, and what were the key findings within that grade band regardless of what the assessment was or is? And so here we'll have kind of four buckets within each grade band of the key findings that we see for this idea of literacy and to what extent are students able to engage and perform at grade level. So we look at K3, last year, the '24, '25, the school year was the first year in which we implemented Act 20. With Act 20 came a new state requirement assessment for early literacy. Prior to that time, we used STAR early literacy. Last year, we switched to CANSWEB. So we didn't have comparative data year to year. Instead, the data that you see included in the report is actually winter, which was the first time that that was required by the state for Act 20 compared to spring. It was also the first year we put reading plans into place. Some of the data we included, we had 434 students, K3, who are performing below the 25th percentile, and put on a reading plan, which is just an intensive way of providing support for those students to build their foundational literacy skills, to get them where we want them to be, knowing how critical that is. We did see a reduction from winter to spring. This year, we did include '25, '26 data. This fall, we're currently at 232 reading plans. So we recognize that, of course, the norms changed on the assessment as well. And it was an opportunity for us to look at some of our practices and think about, what are we noticing from this data? We noticed some students were struggling with lowercase letters. When are we introducing lowercase letters? Can we do that sooner? What are some of the practices that may be coming in later units of the year? But we wanted our students to have earlier and have more repetitions of them. We were able to make some of those instructional adjustments. We're seeing fewer students on reading plans as a result this year. So exciting data for us to learn from the experience last year and be able to apply it for our students who are in form. When we get to 4 or 5, we use two assessments, the forward assessment, which of course is our state exam, and then STAR reading in both English and Spanish, recognizing that building bilingualism and literacy across languages is important to our district and our mission. We did see within our STAR data for all students, 4 or 5, we did see a 12% increase in proficiency. So pretty significant jumps that we're really excited about, given our first year of new curricular implementation with the new status curriculum. We saw 63% of students showing typical or high growth there, and our African-American students doubled in proficiency, moving from 19% to 43%. So 19% at the end of '23, '24, 43% at the end of '24, '25. And then we get to middle school, similar data sets there, a 15% increase in STAR proficiency, 71% of our middle school students making typical or high growth, significant increases across our focus groups, 15% increase for our African-American students, 13% increase for expanding students, another 13% for our students with IEP. So really excited about the growth that we were seeing in middle school. We'll name it in our leadership moves, but in part of the implementation of the new curricular resource, kind of changed the class schedules. We went from class periods that were about 45, 47 minutes to 60 minutes of core instruction and about 20, 22 minutes of targeted skills, really working on what students needed of that. And these longer classes with the targeted skills block has been really critical to accelerate growth that we're seeing for all students and then our focus groups as well. And then at the high school level, we use pre-ACT for ninth and 10th grade and ACT for 11th. We did see an increase in the number of students meeting the ACT college readiness benchmark. And our overall ACT score in the area of reading specifically increased from 20.0 to 20.7. We clearly identified a need here in supporting our multilingual students in pre-ACT and ACT. And we're looking at some strategies to support that through co-teaching. We also had the opportunity here to look at cohort data. So we could look at our current 11th graders. What do they score as 9th graders on the pre-ACT? What do they score as 10th graders on the pre-ACT? And we saw some growth there. We're also able to look at our current 12th graders and say, here's where they scored in pre-ACT as 10th graders, here's where they scored as 11th graders. Also saw growth there. So many of our internal metrics are showing a lot of significant growth year over year for our students across many of these different, many of these different data sets. Also some exciting percent increases for our focus groups at the high school. While we know we need to focus on multilingual students, we did see a 20% increase for our students with disabilities. We did also note that with pre-ACT, typically that the state assessment is given in the spring of ninth and 10th grade, we did opt this year to do pre-ACT for the beginning of freshman year, 9th grade as well, as another opportunity for students to practice that. We see our fall data last year was around 42% of students meeting the college readiness benchmark for reading. We're already at 49.5% with the 9th grade data this fall, which is really promising and exciting, knowing that those 9th graders were 8th graders last year for getting to experience our new curriculum that we drafted in May of last year. So overall, these are the key findings that we have included throughout the report. You'll see lots of other breakdowns by focus group, et cetera. But if we tried to distill it a bit, this is what you would see, really. Lots of increases when we compare ourselves year to year. When we look at our comparative data with other districts, that's an area that the checklist in this conversation with the board has allowed us to really dig into and think through. Number one, who are our peer districts? And how do we determine what our, who our peer districts are? And then what can we learn from that collaboration and understanding more about those experiences? So we continue to wrestle with who are our peer districts. We've outlined several within this monitoring report, but know that as we dug in a little bit further, we recognize that some of those districts don't represent the same level of diversity that we pride ourselves in in the primary school district. And so that's something that we're continuing to reevaluate, but appreciate And so that's something that we're continuing to reevaluate, but appreciate the opportunity to, to learn from others and to see where can we continue to accelerate our growth as we know we are seeing growth internally year over year and how can we accelerate that growth even faster as a part of that? We still continue to outpace the state in all of the various metrics. So the leadership moves that we believe contributed to this work include professional learning communities. We continue to see professional learning communities as a unit of change and continue to invest heavily in that staff collaboration and working through a cycle of inquiry of understanding student needs and then responding accordingly. So the example I shared earlier, side gap and lowercase letters and students understanding and being able to quickly rapidly identify lowercase letters, what can we do instructionally to support our students with those things? We also named role-like professional learning. So prior to last year, role-like professional learning existed, but it was often for isolated groups. Last year was the first year we have all staff engaged in role-like learning the first Monday of the month. So all grade one teachers, first Monday of the month, go to Glacier Edge and they're all together regardless of what elementary school they teach at. And they're practicing or they're engaged in backwards mapping the curriculum to understand what is the assessment and where am I planning for my students so that I really am teaching to grade level standards, are able to problem solve and look through that. So role-like professional learning has been an important layer to this. You'll see staff always stated in a lot of our report about their experience with that. And finally, as I alluded to earlier as well, the middle school schedule adjustments and really having the longer core instructional block as well as a targeted skills block really allowed our teachers to understand what are the student needs and how do we respond intentionally with instruction? And then how do we monitor student data to make sure that they are continuing to grow as a result? The middle school data is definitely a testament to what we see there. So those are some of the leadership moves. I'm going to hand it over to Teresa to share a bit more about another data set, a few less percentages and under quotation marks, but what we're hearing from our staff and students.
Yeah, so the street data is to us some of the most important data. This tells us the experience that our adults and our children are having. And so the leadership moves that Amy indicated are coming up strong in the voices of our staff and students. You'll notice really the theme there is collaboration, which she mentioned the role alike, she mentioned PLCs. The staff are really finding value in that collaboration. They're learning from each other, they're sharing best resources, which is creating scaffolds. And the most important thing is it's helping access the evidence for all children in our curriculum and in our resources. So that's really powerful that they're finding the value of having to travel to another school or having to be with others that aren't doing that same work that they are in the building, but recognizing that that's how we're all learning and growing. You'll notice with the children that that is also the theme for them. Nobody wants to do this work in isolation, including the little. So they love to turn and talk, turn and talk means you're learning from someone else, you're sharing your voice, you're sharing your experience. And then they also are really finding value in the project. So the inquiry-based project are a way for them to bring all of the learning and then showing what this means for them in their own lives and being able to share that with others. That all began with collaboration. The most important one, I think, is the bottom and that's just the confidence. So we have a child that now believes that they are a reader and didn't know that they were prior to this. We have teachers who are believing that they are the best education instructor for that child and know exactly what they need to make sure that they're making growth in reading. So all of that coming together is showing us that the right work is happening. And if we stay true to the collaboration and the confidence that we're building, our scores will just continue to increase and we'll have happy and educated children, which is our goal.
And the projects you alluded to here with these comments, those are within the SAVIS curriculum?
Correct.
Yeah.
So we do, they do five weeks of a unit and then the sixth week is the inquiry day.
So I think the public service announcement of the fifth grade project, they were learning about systems and what can affect system. And then you need to learn about a weather event when it make a public service announcement about that to be in the classroom. You see students get really excited about that, about the project, but definitely a highlight for students as well. So as far as our next steps, one of our leadership moves is to stay the course. We see some initial data already this fall with regard to our decrease in reading plans necessary, our initial 9th grade pre-ACT data that continues to show promise and tell us that we're headed in the right direction in terms of increasing results for students. We want to continue our investment in role-like and PLC, as Teresa called out. These structures for collaboration are really integral to our strategy in supporting continued growth for our staff and for our students. Another next step is we're leaning into our data culture. We continue to try to, last year was our first year of implementation with the new curriculum. Now we're looking at unit assessments and saying, where are we with every single standard? And which standards are students not meeting and how can we adjust accordingly? And so continuing to build a data culture as well as thinking about what do all students need? What do some students need and what do a few students need? Based on what we're seeing in that data will help us get more targeted in our supports. And finally, curricular resource implementation, we are in year two of our new curricular resources. We didn't name SAVIS adoption as one of our leadership moves because we don't believe that the curriculum itself is magic. It's the ways in which our staff are collaborating around it, using the data and empowering our students. That really is, that was really the leadership move. But we know in year two of implementation, there are new things that we're learning. We actually have just reached out to another district that's implementing the same curriculum and we're going to go visit their site and they're going to come to our site. So we can continue to learn from each other and refine our practices specifically around how we're supporting multilingual learners through the use of that curriculum. So these are some of our next steps to make sure that we can continue on this, on this path with regard to literacy. Pause there for any questions.
Just a reminder to the community especially that this was kind of a 30,000-foot view of the document that is linked in Board Docs that is rich with data and examples and numbers, which I know I appreciated being able to take that deep dive and reading into, but encouraging folks to do that same thing, that we had the opportunity to look at these materials while in advance. So thank you again for all of that. Questions, comments from board members, what we have our team here?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, just kind of looking at the report itself. Starting with the all-student data for kindergarten and third grade. Is there a reason, I'm sure there is, but why the K3 AIMS Web data is for all students is presented as raw numbers, but kind of everywhere else in the report, it's percentages?
Oh, yep, it's because we, the way that our system calculates it, we calculate the number of reading plans, which is the number of students below the 25th percentile. We certainly have, we could recalculate those for you, Joe, if that's.
No, it's okay. So this is just the number of students on reading.
Correct.
Okay. No, I, I, I think it, I think it makes sense. It's okay to have that as a raw number as long as that's, it's always presented as a raw number and then we're comparing apples to apples going forward.
Yeah, for sure.
My other question is on the STAR data. I saw somewhere a reference that the norms were updated. Could you just speak a little bit about what that means?
Yep, so the norms in terms of what bands are considered proficient, advanced, et cetera, have changed over the past, the summer of 2024. Those changed right, right before this, along with forward norms. So what we've found is that many of the assessments since COVID have re-normed. So they are recognizing where, where students are performing nationally and then they've adjusted the norms and the cut scores accordingly. So one grade band or one score band, they have been proficient before and now they've looked at where students are scoring and they've adjusted that accordingly. And what we've found over the years is that there's been constantly a re-norming or continually a new assessment. And so we've, we look at multiple data sets to make sure that we can actually get a true picture of is this a result of norms changing? Or is this a result of a direct impact of our results? And so while not included here, but we're also looking at unit over unit assessment data. So what percent of our students are meeting the 80% benchmark at each of our units from beginning of the year to the end of the year? We're looking at student formative assessment as well, all of which is indicating that we're seeing a positive increase. So then we see it on these assessments as well, even though we know the norms changed. We believe that the triangulation of that data helps us to think through that because there just has been a re-norming of all of these assessments over the last few years.
Good. And I think that anticipates kind of my next question, which is like, in some of these areas, we're seeing some pretty significant jumps in the proficiency percentages. How much of that do we think is attributable to the re-norming? Or you know, I don't know, you probably can't quantify, but is the re-norming, does that affect the proficiency data?
It can, right? So it could be a contributing factor. I think the other piece that we're seeing is we really have focused on grade level standards. And we do believe that that focus on grade level standards with an aligned curricular resource that we're using across all sites has been really, really pivotal. So I think it's difficult to quantify, you know, do we think it's 1 or 2% of this and this much of this? But that's where we look to multiple data sets, like we noted just even the unit assessments, what we're seeing in classrooms, students feeling like they're a reader or naming, now I get the new routine and I can do these things. I think those are all data points that indicate we're headed in the right direction. I think it's actually a perfect time that we shifted to this sort of monitoring report. So we're not trying to decide what's statistically significant and whether point one is an increase or a decrease because it is kind of that totality and the holistic nature, knowing that each of these data points has their own caveats about re-norming or what that could look like. But we do believe that the increases we're seeing aren't just attributed to the re-norming, but a direct impact of the instructional decisions to that, making an amazing work our staff doing in classrooms.
That makes a lot of sense. My last question and then I'll, I'll be quiet. And I think this is because I don't understand how these, where the numbers come from. Can you explain why we would see such big jumps in proficiency, but the growth percentage doesn't go up? I, I think I'm just not understanding how growth is calculated.
Yep, so, so growth is a standard growth percentile and it's comparing students to each other. So if it's a student who is scoring at the proficient level, I'm going to be compared to other students who are also scoring proficient. And then within that band of students who are proficient, they're going to compare my growth from the previous assessment to those other students. So if I'm already proficient, but I didn't actually grow that much, I'm actually going to have a low growth percentile compared to my peers versus if I was at that percent, but last year I was scoring, I wasn't yet proficient and I moved up to that band. Then there's the comparison there is trying to help see for a student based on the band that they're in and comparing the students to each other, what is their growth low or typical or high growth? So it's, it's meant to help us think through, a student might not yet be proficient, but are they demonstrating growth, typical or high growth, that we think will lead to them eventually being proficient? Or continuing to advance if they're proficient and continuing to move forward? Is that?
I think so.
It's like an added, I see it as like an added individualized measurement of we're not just looking to have students land in particular proficiency bands, but regardless of where you are, are you still making growth from wherever you are to something, right?
So we're not stagnating that just, just because you're advanced, we actually still want you to grow, right? We don't just want you to reach that benchmark, we want you to continue growing. And so it's measuring you against peers because we also recognize if you're advanced, the opportunity for growth might be less than if you were at a lower score in the end.
I think by elevating that as a valued data point in the district, I think just reminds people that we're not spending resources and energy to only support students who struggle. I think there's that, that zero sum perception that if we're supporting students with reading plans and somehow we're not able to support students that are maybe already at proficient or above, but we are recognizing and owning that as a data point because it's valuable to have all students achieve and grow. So just, yeah, that's how I feel about it.
Thanks. Your other question?
I have a question about.
No, no, you go first because I.
My question's more about just like the, the report itself.
No, go ahead. Yeah.
Okay, I loved reading this and it was very, very user-friendly. For somebody who like just sees a lot of numbers sometimes and like, I don't know what I'm reading. I love that you spell it out so I actually understood it. And I was curious though, the amount of time that it took to compile this. Because again, it was really, it was really fantastic.
So this was our first report. So I think we did spend a lot of time really thinking about what were some of the key components that we wanted to intentionally include and how do we want to organize it? So I do think this report probably took us longer. If this is a template that works for the board when we present math, it will be a bit more formulaic for us. We'll know what data we're looking for. We'll know working in grade bands and putting key findings for each grade band works really well, those sorts of things. And I think that we will become more efficient in the process. But I do appreciate, it was really good conversation for our team too, to also struggle with who are our peer districts? And what does that look like? This is the first time we've been asked to do that and to think about that in a different way has been really enriching conversation for our team to grapple with what does that, what does that mean for us? So I do think we've learned a lot in the process and we'll become more efficient with the report part as we go. Whatever appreciated the questions for us to dive in and reflect as well.
I feel like we had a big ask. But again, what I feel like I got out of it was a lot more valuable for me personally. And I feel like it's something that our community was looking at, you know, this is a great summary and here's all of this information underneath it, here are the leadership. I just really felt like it was a very, very valuable information all contained. That is why I wondered how long it just made me doing this. But it was, I thought, and I love seeing the strategic plan and the journey of the lifelong learner.
Yeah.
But I think the key parts for me just really, this is just a lot of great information and it's very digestible. I'm sure it was just a piece of cake. Thank you.
Building off of that, this is the first, for me, I think, report, but partially because I feel like I've had a lot of points of input over the year or so in talking about like what do we want our results policy to say? How do we want these reports to look? How do we want our monitoring of these reports to look? And this is the first one that feels like it's all come together. You know, it's like putting on, I was going to say like that nice pair of sweatpants. And maybe more probably like a well-fit and cut suit, you know? But you're like, this is just how it's supposed to look. And it just felt really good that way, you know, from the cover page here all the way through the data, like this makes sense. It checks off the boxes in order so I can kind of like drone through it and make sure everything's there. So even if I'm not an educator, I'm not a statistician, I know what I'm looking at and why I'm looking at it and it makes sense. And I would encourage everybody in our community that's watching this to like, go look at the report. You can see how our students are learning literacy. It's literally right there, as transparent as can be, you know, by the grade bands, by the testing we get. And then the little summaries about what, how you're interpreting the data, super important to us. This cover page is fantastic. I think you said this was helped along with AI a little bit. I mean, that's just an absolutely excellent implementation of AI to summarize that. I think my questions, well, I would say one more thing. It is very hard to come up with a system like this that ties values to practice in a way that communicates broadly. Like that is a very rare thing. And at times, I think when we go through these reports and we don't know what, that questions to ask or what we're struggling with, that something's not there, it's because there's some connectivity that's missing there. And I feel this across all sorts of different organizations that I get to be a part of. And this feels like that rare instance where we absolutely nailed it. You go back to the back of it, look at the journey of lifelong learner, you look at, you know, the outline of our strategic framework that the community articulated to us, those values are then expressed, you know, in the back. It'll be hopefully compiled later rather easily into a report on that. But then through the data and then back to this cover page that clearly articulates this is what's going on with the leadership moves in it. This just felt so good to go through and just. But I, you know, I'm wondering how much of that is because like, I feel like I was like, this is what I would want to do. So I'm curious to get it put on that. I think my building off of Meredith's questions is, I understand this probably took a lot of time, especially being the first one, especially being like a consolidated results thing. My question would be like an honest accounting of is the time worth it? Not only in the sense of you're creating this tool that communicates very well with the public, which I think it does, but as a tool for you guys, like you said, so it's not just time spent doing bureaucracy is what I would want to avoid. Because I understand there's going to be time invested. I don't want it to be spent just doing bureaucracy. Does that make sense?
It does. I think that we, when we work with schools on continuous improvement, we've been talking about leading data and lagging data. This is lagging data for the most part. This was the spring of last year, if not earlier. So these are not the data points that are helping to decide what to teach in class tomorrow. That's our leading data. That's our leading data and that's the data that schools are looking at on a daily basis. But I do think this data helps us to understand trends and themes. I think the comparison to other districts is helpful for us to understand while we're making decisions about leading data, what are the overall, you know, what's the 30,000-foot view that we need to also understand when we're going to curricular resource adoption cycles or think about large systemic changes and what has been the impact of that over time? So I do think that that is, that's helpful in that way, John. I think the only change I would make in some of it is a little bit, we're on specific timelines of when data can be shared.
Yeah.
I know we waited, we waited for this one. We've had this data since May, June. We waited because of same recording and when that data was available. But I think that throughout the rest of the year, we've tried to align the recording calendar to be pretty timely to when we're getting those data sets. And I think that will make it even more valuable for our team.
So I also want to point out, like when we're going on this kind of checklist of like, are we doing our jobs as board members, asking the right questions? The one that I think falls through the cracks the most is this kind of reflective, how are our leadership moves working? And so this couple pages you guys have here towards the, that speak to the value of the PLCs and the role alike time that people are spending on their Mondays and that. Like that to me is just a hugely valuable thing to see the, yes, we're evaluating our leadership moves. In this case, there's some pretty positive feedback there. And like as someone who's taught before, there's no better feeling than when your expectations and your values and your daily practice are aligned and you can feel that happening. It's just kind of calming for the soul and just kind of see that reflected in this report with all these data points, that that was really, really valuable to me.
I would like to reiterate that. I think especially, I mean, I look at this more as an outward facing, you know, document rather than something that we need necessarily internally, but this is communicating to the whole, you know, all the families, the district. This is who we are. This is what, you know, work is taking place. I love the fact for like middle school families who maybe have wondered about a change in timing, you know? Here, this is, this is what the outcome of that is. That's really valuable. I think that's something that, you know, as a family, maybe you knew there was a change, but you really didn't know what the benefit was or you didn't see circle back, you know? Here, this is what it did. Oh, perfect, fantastic. That's like, I, I love that. I think this just really communicates so well.
So just hand it to Marcy and she'll make it into a beautiful academic report. It'll be a lot prettier than it is right now.
I just wanted to thank you guys for gathering and using cohort-related data to tell the story and comparing apples to apples. And I think that that's as accurate as we're going to get to really seeing the student experience. So I just wanted to put that out there and thank you.
I also really liked the comparative data. It gave me the thing that I've kind of been asking for, which is context for data. And I understand it's never going to be perfect because there is no peer district that's exactly a one-to-one comparison with us. But it's still, it's going to give us, if we do this year over year, we're going to get that longitudinal comparison data that at least puts what we're seeing in context to what others are saying. And I, that was very useful to me in addition to what everybody else said. This is, I loved having data without having a checkbox next to it. And it allows us to assign our own value to what it says.
And there was narrative, right? We talked about data having a story. You provided some story and context, but it also gives us place to just kind of chew and grapple. I thought that peer district data was also just such a way to be really transparent with our community and also a bit of a point that I think I heard you say, Amy, of also recognizing we don't really have a full peer and still elevating that we value the diversity of our district, that by comparative data, it is not to then see that our diversity is not an asset. So just that cautionary piece that, that is something that our learners get beyond showing that I can read, all of the things that I get by showing up in classrooms with students from different lived experiences and backgrounds, that that is immeasurable, but something as just the piece that I want to hold, at least for myself, of comparing, that that isn't a place that we allow our community to go.
I so appreciate you lifting that up, Jen, because there's, there's not many things that get me fired up, but when I hear dialogue that equates increased diversity to lower performance, it just drives, it drives me crazy. I cannot, I mean, because that's, what are you saying about diversity? What are you saying about the students?
That you're alluding to.
That you're speaking of. And while we do look at, we had some deep conversations where now that we dig into peer data around, or not beyond, beyond Dayton County, because rightfully so, we keep asking each other, why not this benchmark? And we know that, and also forces us to look at, you know, if there are barriers that are not allowing us to hit a higher, higher benchmark, then it's our responsibility as we truly embrace our equity framework to dismantle the barrier as it says. And it makes us dig into it in those ways, dismantle the barrier movement and then continue to put the high expectation out there. So it's just so important for our community and anyone that loves public education the way it's designed to be to understand that diversity is not a, is something that takes away from the expectation of academic excellence. It's such a misnomer. So I just, let me, thanks for letting me get on my soapbox for that one. But I appreciate you lifting it up as well.
Yeah.
I sort of agree with John. I think that it's very user-friendly for community members, which I think is so important because I thought that reports, you know, a year or two ago, I don't think anybody could just come up like, let's see what's going on in the district and, you know, results 2.4 and they'd be like, I had no idea what I'm looking at. This tells that story and I love seeing things put in a simple way. There's no true way to demonstrate a mastery and explain something complex in a way that somebody, anybody can pick up and understand. I know where we are and where we're going. I think that there's a lot to just inform the community and dispel some of these misdemeanors, right? If you're not really putting it out there in the space in a simple way for them to understand, they're not going to understand and go back to what they think is right, which may not be right, right? So I think this is all part of telling the story, probably important to the community, hopefully more or fewer people actually will be able to access these reports and documents. I know I'm going to start pointing people.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for asking the question. Let me show you where that is.
Yeah.
Go take a look. It's involved. So thank you.
Thank you. Like I said, I think it's been, John, you asked the question about, has this actually been helpful for our team? And I think, if I think back to a year ago when we were having these conversations, our conversations were, well, five of the seven focus groups showed an increase. Is that yellow or is that green? Right? And so we were talking about those things and now we're having the rich dialogue that Dr. Clarity was talking about and helping us to lean into that. And so I think it is, while it's sometimes time-consuming, I think we're, it shifted the narrative and the questions that we're able to ask as a result and really appreciate the board's willingness to allow us to try something.
I just had two other quick pieces. The bottom of page 11 of the report into page 12 has the SABAS end of year implementation survey. Can you help me understand maybe, so the 24, 25 school year, I just, maybe I need to say it out loud because I'm in my own head, because I'm seeing beginning of year, I'm thinking the beginning of 24, 25, I was at 85%. Yeah, I agree. And then at the end of the year, I felt worse? Or is that end of 24, 25 and then beginning of this?
So the first data was taken, we asked the same questions all year. And the first data was taken after staff went to the summer professional learning. So people left summer professional learning, how are you feeling about this at this point? And we were looking at throughout the whole year, can we sustain? There was really high levels of engagement and agreement. And throughout the year, can we sustain those sort of levels of staff enthusiasm around what the curricular resources look like?
So I am reading it correctly that there has been a drop in confidence, but that is likely attributed to now I'm doing the work and implementing. But I just want to make sure I was reading that right, that they're, like, staff are in it now and seeking out those supports, that the numbers are not as aspirational as they were at the start of the year.
So I think, yeah, the first one, Jen, for example, understanding materials, educators able to navigate the curriculum resources, unpack the physical and digital lessons. Sometimes it's a, you don't know what you don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
I think at the beginning of the year, we're like, oh, yep, we got that. And as we've gotten it, oh, there's a whole lot more here that we're not yet getting to. So I don't, we want to be transparent with the data and not only provide data that shows increases, but also these are the things that we're learning along the way.
And that was kind of, wanted to lift that up is ensuring that alongside what's happening in the PLC time, that that time is reinforcing the things that we're seeing staff need, you know, right? Working through the curriculum and making sure that the time matches where staff are feeling uncertain.
And I think the last one there about understanding coherent expectations, that was an area where we do see growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, which is certainly what we would want to be able to continue to do.
So with the caveat that I just sort of said, be responsive, I do want to just elevate what happens to still be on the slide there, the stay the course piece. I worked in this district for a really long time and stay the course was not always a theme. It was next thing, jump to the next thing. And terrible word, yeah.
I'm arcing back to another thought.
Right? But just like let it land and continue to do the work. And I just want to elevate how much I hear that and hope that that means maybe a little softening for staff as well, that we're not looking to then change something else. Let's keep elevating, supporting teachers and staff for what they need, but this is, this is where we're going to live and put the energy forward.
Thank you again. And that's, at our last cabinet meeting, we were discussing, we need to put that as part of it because sometimes the strongest leadership move is doing absolutely the same thing that you did in your report. And it's, okay, the general question, what's new this year? Nothing. And that's perfect.
Which still means everything, right? It's nothing and everything.
And to that, I think, from what I've heard from the comments, this is an excellent template moving forward. Like do all the things that are expected of a results report, so yeah.
I will be curious as we go through like more of these, does the time shrink for you? But also the value, I think, I just want to reiterate, the value is very high, at least from my perspective and it sounds like the rest of the board's perspective, so.
We were intentional to try to keep the slide deck pretty slim because we know only one results policy tonight on our board calendar. There's sometimes we have four later on in the spring. And so we wanted to not set a precedent of having 20 slides as a result. So it's good to know that the snapshot, high-level view was helpful for the board to be at the slides, but that the report can be there as well. So that will be helpful for our team.
So board members though, our role is not just to be excited about a report. It's to talk about, do we think there's achieving reasonable progress happening in the data that we're seeing? So if we're feeling ready to move into that discussion, I know we're all the shiny and exciting things, but how is the data actually, do we think we're hitting reasonable progress? So we've had the report of results policy 2.1, language arts. I would accept a motion to approve the report as presented so we can then begin our discussion on reasonable progress. Is there a motion? Thank you, Meredith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mon Carlos. So again, if you look at our report, we are looking to determine, as I'm scrolling and scrolling, achieving reasonable progress or not, yet achieving reasonable progress. I would argue even though SABAS is a new curriculum, that we're not in capacity building, thoughts around achieving reasonable progress or not?
I feel like you're absolutely achieving reasonable progress.
I was going to say, like, we simplified all these suggestions in this one report. It's like a lot of these data points suggest that you're achieving excellent progress.
Right, yeah.
So, but we're not doing that.